For our March monthly meeting on the thirteenth, we have received requests to meet with applicants for Sixth Chestnut Street and one twenty-sixth Main Street and twentieth Boulevard. Board work projects, we submitted our annual budget request to the village accountant on February twenty-sixth. We continue to work through the design standards and our next workshop is scheduled for March the tenth. Once text edits are complete, we'll need to work with Tilly to incorporate into their template and add images. We are concerned about funding gap pertaining to the completion of the updates to the design guidelines included in our budget request are outlined on the attached page. Board operations, code enforcement, follow-up. We look forward to receiving feedback on our comments submitted to the board in February regarding code enforcement and hope to conduct a joint meeting between HDRB, the Board of Trustees, and any other interested parties soon. I will not read the attached regarding the grant. It's lengthy. Buyer company, I think we have a quick note. Buyer company number one responded to twelve calls for the month of February. Short and sweet. Tree advisor, we had already code update.
In the month of February, the code update committee conducted two meetings during the month of February, the presentation summarizing the reasons why. The topic of evaluate permitting of conservation subdivisions will not be included in the village code. That was completed. The draft document on the topic of evaluate permitting of outright demolition of existing structures was completed and reviewed by legal counsel. Draft document on the topic of SASS, which is Sinic Areas of Statewide Significance, was completed. A list of exception actions was developed for the topic of evaluated adopting waterfront consistency review law and a draft document was developed. Research has been conducted on the topic of evaluate permitting of conservation easements. Monthly conference call, my search did not occur. The phase four public meeting date has been set as April third, two thousand and nineteen at the firehouse.
Water and wastewater. Great, good timing, man.
Late on submission, so if you wouldn't mind passing that down the line.
I keep wanting to Jeff.
Start with water if we can. We are up fifteen percent from last year at this time, so it's potential this week. We'll be looking, keeping our eyes open and whatnot from February this year to February last year. Possible it's an issue, it's possible it's just an increase in usage, but we'll keep our eye on that, see if that's something that's... Hundred percent. After that, there was no issues with anything going on up there. The DEP Catskill connection, Bart, there's a few things, only a couple things left that Bart was gonna be hanging in on because he'd already started the DEP connection, he was gonna continue on with that. He estimates having a preliminary layout to DEP for their consideration by the end of March and we're gonna need to, you know, kind of, we're gonna keep asking that everything's all right, so we don't get too far down the line for them to turn us around and start something different. So hopefully, you know, keeping in touch with them is gonna be something that's, we make sure they get what they want this time. Again, yeah, the big hurdle with the new location is vehicular access because if you look at between Fisker Road and three oh one, you know, that kind of gully as it goes down in between the two roads, that's where they want us to connect. And so the ability to get in there off of Fisker Road with a vehicle to do whatever work we may need to do down there is gonna be the, kind of, the biggest issue. We'll have to fill some areas and that's where the new meter pit will be installed, that's where they want the connection to be. So it's just gonna be a little funky, it's gonna take a little coordinating, again, with them on their property, we want them to really tell us that what we're doing in the preliminary layout is gonna be acceptable before going further. And that brings up the Board of Supply Agreement with DEP. Last summer, we sent out a letter stating our concerns with the draft WSA supplied to us and to date, we never received their response. We actually didn't even receive acknowledgement that they got it, so I asked Jeff to, asked him this morning if he could get ahold of them just to, you know, see if they're in the process of reviewing it. It's been a while, but, you know, just like to make sure that they're, you know, that they had it and whatnot. So, and to get, you know, requested official response so that we can determine their best course of action. And then also related to all of that is the upper DM rehabilitation. I spoke with Tectonic, the one day that we spent the mayor and Bart and myself walking around the whole area out there, there's a potential for another access on the eastern side. That was the one where it was the most kind of intrusive to one of the properties where they wanted to build this temporary road. It was gonna be big and expensive and crossing a, you know, a million dollar property, so, you know, we thought of ideas to go around that and I posed it to Tectonic, they did a cursory glance and we'll see whether it's something that's gonna be, there'll be, the quantity of easements would be more, but the properties aren't developed yet, so they might be easier to get, you know, we'll find that out, but we started that process. That's it there. Any questions on water? Sewer. Had the opportunity to bring our new engineering consultants, Pitt and Garo and Doach, around to see the village's water and wastewater infrastructure so that they could get the lay of the land. We took a few hours for the tour from the river to the reservoirs and I believe it was time well spent. Both engineers have a background in wastewater operations, so they identified and agreed with the need for better sludge management and among other topics that we had that are already in the works, so they seem to be a good couple of guys, I think, who are gonna be well-served and we'll see how things work out. The pilot study I mentioned for the Balut thickener last month, wanted it for April, they're not available till June, so we'll still get to see it, it's just gonna be later in the year, but at the same time, as I mentioned that to PND, they have some other smaller facilities like ours that have different ways of handling it, so it actually just kind of spurred the conversation of looking at some alternatives to, to the one, we'll see them all this way and just have a better idea of what's gonna work best for us.
Rick, can you take a little inventory on the siding down there that we need or whatever we need, just that some might be damaged, we wanna finish that.
Yeah, I could use a little bit of help with that because I know my hands don't really look some way.
All right.
I have it there, I'll peel it all apart, I just don't know exactly what goes where.
All right, I'll send my, my, I don't know.
And then regarding the, I know you were thinking about that enclosure down there for New Street, for the West Street move, we have all those materials included in the post, so I mean, that's something that...
You took them back, they were leaning, they're not there right?
Yeah, we cleaned it up because we, you know, we just didn't...
Okay, we'll see if we can get that. All right, thanks. Any questions, anyone?
Thank you.
Building Department, applications and permit fees collected, seven hundred dollars. Record searches, zero, other fees, thirty, slow month, seven hundred and thirty dollars. Let's see, where are we? Report from Highway. We had a total of five snow and ice events for the month, mostly worked on equipment while we weren't plowing and sculpting, borrowed a chipper from the town, a Phillips now to chip up the Christmas trees, put a new tire on the Bobcat, new hydraulic lines in the backhoe, new exhaust on the ninety-seven three fifty, and had environmental waste come to take our waste oil. The two thousand and sixteen F thirty-five three fifty was brought to Hudson River truck and trailer to fix an electrical issue that stemmed from a faulty solenoid. We're looking to start getting ready for spring bertering benches to the garage to work on them, finish filling potholes in and getting the sweeper attachment ready for street cleaning. Justice Court, February, fines, forfeited bales and civil penalties, three thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars, parking tickets, two thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars, civil fees, five hundred and sixty-five, mandatory state surcharges, sixteen hundred and eighty-three for grand total of seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. Okay. Report Mayor, Board of Trustees, anything?
Well, I have a little something. I was contacted by Maureen McGrath who runs the summer library camp for the middle school every year, and she was asking about volunteer project for them and their theme this year is a universe of stories, and so I suggested maybe we could coordinate with some of the seniors and do a story court, like a cold spring story court. Does anybody, and if anybody has any ideas about who we should talk to or they should talk to, I hope you'll let me know.
What would the story court be? What would a story court be? Sorry.
Oh, you know, kind of like the project that NPR is doing, it's just collecting personal stories of interest that kind of reflect the history of the community, and I just thought it was kind of a neat idea and please make some suggestions.
Thanks.
Maria?
Back in, you know, December, we had looked at the fee structure.
The what?
The fee structure to approve it, you remember, at the rework meeting in December?
Uh-huh.
And we recognized that some of the fees in there were not what they should be.
Right.
So I went back through the code and identified all the places where there is a fee mentioned and identified where the fee is stated as opposed to, you need a permit, you have to pay a fee versus you have to pay a fee of X amount. I sent that off to Fran and Jeff and I think Fran was looking at fines, penalties that are assessed by either the police or the courts. And so what I think we will have is two schedules, one schedule for police and court fines and one schedule for permit fees, which will be published by the village as a fee schedule or a fine schedule, and then we'll have to remove them from the village code.
Okay.
So that they're stand-alone and easier to modify.
Right. Okay, great. Rick?
Dockside, dockside, dockside. No, other than working on the dockside project.
Yeah.
We're almost there.
This morning Fran and I went to the Chamber breakfast at Boscoville, which was a presentation by Presbyterian Hospital, I guess it's a hospital group, and also from Boscoville did a little presentation, which was good. So there were quite a few in attendance. Unfortunately, not too many people from the village of Coles from there, a couple of merchants, that was it, but it was full room besides that, so it was a good gathering. There's a new head of the chamber, it is Eliza Starbuck, and so she'll be taking over, she isn't there right now, so we did that. We've been spending a lot of time meeting with roofers on this roof and getting prices for that. We've been working a lot on the dockside fees schedule and old brochure that we came up with, so, which we'll be discussing later on tonight, but a lot of times going into that, there are a number of people that are interested in, you know, weddings or events there, so hopefully we'll get this done tonight so that we can contact them and go over that and secure those dates. That's about it for me. So if we move ahead here, next is approve the three thousand expenditure for the website. Fran, were you sat in on that or somebody else?
I hated Aaron sitting on it. At this point, I think Jeff has just asked that, we don't have to decide on what...
Content.
What template we want, what content we want, the content's gonna move over. Three thousand dollars was the, take one of their templates versus the forty-five hundred where they'll, they'll custom make a front template for us, and three thousand seemed to be the least expensive and the most reasonable and since they're gonna do most of the work to, to put everything over, Aaron, just jump in anytime. It just seems that we just need an okay to spend the three thousand and give them an okay to stop moving on it, and then we can work on how we want our front page to look. So at this point, it's just, it's just a case of approving the expenditure because the website we currently have will no longer be supported very shortly.
I didn't catch if there was a manual on that one.
I believe we're paying one now, I don't know if that's gonna carry forward.
I saw a little note, must be from Jeff, pick a template, I think there were three were shown.
Right.
Are there any only three available?
He said to me, I think there were four they showed us, he said to me that tonight we don't really need to pick the template, we just need to, to make the...
Then why did you write this?
I don't know, he told me that, he told me to tell you, nobody wrote that.
All right, so we'll move that. So I'll make a motion to approve the three thousand expenditure for the new website.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Also, I think the reason was that it was obsolete or we had to change?
Right, it's the same company, but they're no longer gonna support the one that...
Support the one we had, so it's not something we just decided to do.
So in the, in the budget, there is a line item called Village Clerk Website of two thousand eighteen, nineteen, of twenty-two hundred and seventy dollars. That is carried over into two thousand nineteen, twenty, but that's Village Clerk Website. I thought, I guess I was under the impression that that was a personal services to the, to the village clerk as opposed to fees to a website company.
I don't know, my gut feeling is that it's not, it's not money we're giving to the village clerk, so I would assume it must be something to do with monthly payments.
Must be something with monthly...
To do with the monthly payment for the site, I believe, but I'm not positive, Maria.
The actuals would imply that it's something different that, well, unless the fee, the monthly fee has gone up. That's a pretty stiff monthly fee. That's over three hundred dollars a month.
That's three hours of work.
That's not just hosting the website, it's maintenance of the website, so it's probably backup as well as hosting. Okay.
Can you ask Jeff tomorrow?
Can I just say that if they're in that process of designing, if you need any photos of the village, like, there's a lot of them on the tree board website, they're, I mean, I took most of them, so they're not, if you need photos for the, whatever template you're doing, just email me, I'm happy to give you guys photos.
Okay, thank you. Next, review proposal for the Lime Energy Update, I believe, Maria, you were...
If you go to the last page in the handout, there are two proposals for Lime. One is for eighty-five Main Street, and the other is for the Highway Garage. The proposal is to take all of the incandescent and fluorescent fixtures in both buildings and convert them to LEDs, which means in many cases, you don't just take out the fluorescent, you have to change the connections as well, probably remove the ballast and put something else in. The proposal for eighty-five Main Street, first and second floors and basement is ten thousand dollars, it's ten thousand seven hundred dollars, for the Highway Garage, it's eighty-eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. There's an incentive from Central Hudson to do this, which brings the cost of the village hall down to eighty-one hundred and sixty-six dollars and the Highway Garage down to fifty-five hundred and eighty-three dollars. These things do not track primarily because the village garage requires a lift. There are twelve fixtures in the ceiling, which is probably at least two stories if not higher, and those, those fixtures, they're obviously very large fixtures, they will have to be addressed via a lift, so there's an overhead for the Highway Garage. Central Hudson is offering, Central Hudson slash Lime is offering a lump sum, some payment of a ten point six one percent discount or a payment plan of twelve payments over one year or twenty-four payments over two years at no difference in cost, there's no overhead, no, no interest. So my recommendation is, sorry, so the first question that you should ask is how long before we see savings? I believe the estimates from, from Lime Energy were based upon totally unrealistic hours of usage per week or per month. I believe that we're probably going to see more such as fifteen percent savings per year. I believe that with the Highway Garage, it will be different. Current fixtures, the current ceiling fixtures, there are twelve of them, only six of them are working, six bulbs are burned out, but they're still, they're still pulling juice, so that's just a total waste to the village, so converting them would, would make more sense.
Do we know what the, what's the usage on the highway?
I have a, you will see, there's two different, so if you go to what's, the second page four, the second page four, not the first page, it's scope of work, highway, Putnam County Highway, office, hall, restroom, locker, bay, you wanna go to bay, which is the sixth row.
Mm-hmm.
So the estimated hours there is twenty-three hundred and forty-six hours, and that is, that, that is, this can be said it's a guesstimate of what it is.
Is there a, can you convert that to dollars for me?
No, I can't, I'd have to go, I'd have to go back and do some calculations, off the top, right here, no, I can't.
Yeah, does that mean, I don't know what that means.
So what we're doing there is converting a four hundred watt metal MH fixture to a one hundred and thirty-five watt LED, so you're going from pulling four hundred watts times twelve to a hundred and thirty-five watts times twelve, so your savings should be, your shape, savings should be sixty-six percent.
When do we have to do this by?
They believe that Central Hudson will guarantee the prices by June first, through June first.
Can we get a conversion to see what the money, what it, what actual cost is? Like, what the cost is for the garage and so that we can say, okay, the savings gonna be two hundred dollars per year or...
I, I have the cost for the garage, Michelle has that. The problem is estimating the savings, that's where I have a problem. I can do a...
If we just do an estimate, it'd be good.
It's a reasonable question.
But you were saying that, that their estimated hours of usage are...
Unrealistic.
Too much or too little?
Too high.
Okay.
Too high. So for example, the bay, they're estimating twenty-three hundred and forty-six hours, divide that by fifty, rounding down, fifty hours of, I'm sorry, fifty weeks, that's forty, forty-some hours per week. I don't know that the bay lights are on forty hours a week, I think they're on less than that, so based upon forty hours a week, they...
You're assuming...
They are projecting.
You're assuming an eight-hour day?
That the estimated kilowatt savings will be nine thousand nine hundred and forty-five, and that can be converted into dollars. That's for the entire...
Right.
Forty hours per week makes no sense for the bay since they're not there eight hours a day.
Right. I think Bugsy had talked to Andrew because Andrew had brought it up to him and he said that we're hardly in there with those lights on, so...
Well, one of the things that I did do is I took a look at the conversion cost that Andrew charged for, sorry, the pedal electric charge for, was it water or wastewater, Fran?
Probably that was...
Was for water, the water plant.
The water plant, yeah.
Right. They, they converted, I'm gonna say, for a, do you have the email?
Right.
It, it didn't, it didn't compare well at all.
No, it was...
The dollar was significantly overpriced. I, I did, Fran asked for a different company, looking at a different company, so...
I was just like, he was, that was, the conversation was that, bottom line was Bugsy said they're not in there a lot, so that the change it didn't make any sense.
When the...
That's interesting.
When the police, when the police go with the light, do they turn on the bays or what lights do they turn on to give them?
I doubt it, no.
So they use the bays mostly in the wintertime. The bays currently have some skylights and the skylights are very useful, except when it's fall because then they get covered over by leaf or winter, in which case it gets, okay, replace eighteen failed ballasts on nine HO fixtures in place with LED HO bulbs. So eighteen bulbs were replaced for a cost of twenty-seven hundred dollars. That does not track, this is much less expensive.
In addition to saying, you know, how much savings, there will be some savings, I don't know how much, how long before we get our money back. Fact of the matter is, most of this stuff is old, it's probably going to need to be eventually changed, whether we change it one by one or a handful at a time. We're getting, Central Hudson incentive here, which we wouldn't get anywhere else, we're getting a discount if we pay it up front, which we wouldn't get anyplace else, so I think, you know, I think looking at it and then moving forward with it, you know, it's not gonna be a bad thing for us to do, I mean, for us to sit here and we've done this since when we started on the board.
It's two thousand and sixteen, yes.
Yeah, I mean, this has gone through with Lime coming in and we did, you know, Catherine did all the walkthrough and everything, we talked about it for only five or six years. I just think that it's time to just move on it by the bullet because LEDs are better, they are less expensive, we're gonna get all new fixtures, we're gonna, you know, they're gonna, we outfit this entire building and the Highway Garage, and it's in total, if we pay it up front, it's a little over twelve thousand dollars, which I don't think is a lot of money, so that's my two cents on it.
I'll, I'll get you the numbers.
Okay, or if you're comfortable with it, you're two...
No, 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 you, you asked a fair, valid question, what's the savings? Over what amount of time are we going to get any savings?
We'll put it on the agenda next, next meeting. Next is consider resolution zero six, two thousand and nineteen, authorize mayor to sign contract with Putnam County Real Property for preparation of two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty village taxes. Somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion that to authorize Mayor Morandi to sign the contract from Putnam County Real Property for preparation of the two thousand and nineteen village tax rolls and bills.
I will second it.
Thank you, Maria.
Any discussion?
Yeah, the resolution should be authorizing mayor apostrophe S, not mayor's apostrophe, so it should be possessive.
Don't I give you my say then?
Not you, Michael, it should be possessive as opposed to plural possessive. I'll give it to Jeff tomorrow.
Okay. Roll call?
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Morandi?
Yes. Okay. Approval of Fred Cook Incorporated to perform light cleaning, video inspection, and summary report for the E-one basin sewer main. I think I got the information from dragging it on an email, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh-uh.
All in favor?
Right.
All right. Next, authorize sending service termination letter to out of village water accounts with past due balances, there are twelve accounts. I'll make a motion to send the termination letter.
Second.
All in favor?
Just as a comment, well, these people, some of them received such a notice in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't know if there's any other action that you can take.
No, I don't think we can cut their water off, unfortunately.
Jeff said he was gonna talk to John about the ones that had been... Jeff said he was going to talk to John about the ones that had been continually for three years now, so.
He can't turn that water off.
Maybe we can sue or get it. All right. The total on that, if anyone's interested, is seventeen thousand eight hundred and four, four hundred, seventeen thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars and nineteen cents. Next, approval amend the Hawkins Delafield and Wood L L P bond council agreement. Anyone familiar with that?
Michelle told me today now that I don't remember what she said. I believe we did this and now there's, there's coming a second one. I'm sorry, Michelle did, did mention it to me and I don't remember what she said. But it's, it's not that expensive. It's the need to do this a second time because we have now two separate short-term notes.
If Michelle was given it. Yes. Michelle was given it.
Yeah, she was finding it, yes, I'm sorry.
So, make a motion to approve the amendment to Hawkins Delafield Wood L L P bond council agreement.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm assuming that Jeff can sign that, Fran? It's an authorized officer.
He, he left me the page, the folder of signatures to do so.
Oh, okay, you want to do the...
I'll sign it and give it to you.
Okay.
There's that and a few others. Approval of final listing of fireman service award. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, consider lease agreement for purchase of new pickup truck for the highway department. We were going to use Chip's money, but with the, with the numbers we're getting from the pavement redos, decided to go back to leasing. I'll make a motion to purchase the new pickup truck for highway at the lowest, oh, that's what, okay, first is the agreement to, yeah, the lease agreement with M and T Bank was the lowest bidder for four point four six percent.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
What's that?
Page two.
Oh, yeah, yeah, please, first. Correspondence, we have request to purchase village property owned at fifteen Main Street. This is the, right next to Argentino, between Argentino and Lust, the blue building.
Alabella Bella Ellen?
Yes, that one, yes.
I looked at this and this, to me says pretty much nothing. I don't know. I spoke to Jeff about it today. And I guess I don't believe she's actually bought the property yet. And I, she said, I want to purchase a sidewalk. She doesn't give us any dimension. She doesn't give us any idea what she wants to purchase. Sidewalk in front of fifteen Main. I got an email from Collat River Architects. I have no idea what that means and that's all we got.
Now, in the past, we've sold stoops. I think this is a side.
We've also sold land at Parkridge. We sold property. So that they could extend their stairs or something.
Yeah, yeah.
I believe the thoughts, now this is from Jeff, and I don't think he has anything official, is that she wants to put a little wine and cheese place there and put some tables outside for that. And there's possibly going to be to consider asking somebody to put a cut, to put driveway in, none of this, because I don't think she even owns the property yet. So I don't know if she's just trying to put things in order before she moves forward.
So putting in a cut, she can request it, she's going to have to pay for the cutting. I didn't think there was a driveway here.
I don't think there is.
There's not, there's a tree right there.
There's a space.
There's what?
There's a tree right there.
And I think, I'm not even sure where the property line is and how far, whether or not she has.
No, no.
They've also applied at the tree board for, they haven't applied yet, but they've inquired about removing that tree or coming before the board to talk about that. But she implied that they own the building, her river architect.
No, maybe I'm wrong on that.
Yeah, I might be wrong.
But the idea is that she wants to put some kind of a wine and cheese with little tables outside for people to sit there.
Okay.
And I gather that's why she wants to purchase the sidewalk.
So why don't we table this for now? We'll get in touch with her and...
And ask her to be a bit more specific about what she wants.
You want to do that or you want me to? I can do it.
I will.
What's that?
I'm going to get Jeff tomorrow because I'm not around tomorrow, otherwise I second the page.
Do you want me to ask Jeff to follow up tomorrow?
Okay, fine, good. I'll be around too, so. Next is an easy one, request use reservoir on Trishka Road for kids fishing derby May fifth. I'll make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, let's see. Uh, should we go through the other ones? Discussion of, is there another one? I have a, a memorandum in here for the...
Putnam Morning Food Fest?
No, this was for the, oh, this was for the tax thing. Never mind.
Yeah.
We already, it's just not in any order. Jeff threw at me. That's everything that had to be signed. Was it for you? Okay, so next is discussion on the Dockside Park application. We spent a real lot of time, we, we, we put up a, you know, made up a brochure, several pages that guideline use of the park. We edited it a million times. We've run it by parks. They made their comments. We sent it to our attorney for their comments. And I think we're at a final stage where we had one last question on the M.
Free dot M.
Red dot M.
And I did reword it in here, but I don't know if it's the way everybody wants it or not. I did also in the process of, what I went through today, I picked all John's comments and approved them. And at one point, he had comments about, you know, asking about the inflatables and the live animals. So that made the permit application two pages now instead of one because I added some more information to it. Some more requests about different animals. And also put in his note about if you're selling alcohol to make sure that you have the alcohol authority and health approvals for food. He put those notes. I just pulled whatever John had said. I don't know if at this point everyone wants to take it home and market weed at one more time. Since I have looked at it a million times. But I reworded M.
Okay, so let's go with M first.
Page three.
Either way, John had worded it, it was like, it sounded like that was all you could use was disposable, recyclable materials. And Fran has changed it to any disposable food items you use have to be recyclable material.
And I, I just think we should, I don't, the value of having M in the document escapes me. If someone has disposable food preparation implements, it says they must be made of recyclable materials. Well, that's fine. But to recycle them, you have to clean them before you can recycle them. So I, I just don't understand.
Well, it eliminates styrofoams.
I suppose you could wash them, but you can't, but you can't, it's not a, it's not a recyclable material.
Why don't we just require them to use compostable materials so that they compost and break down instead of going through the whole thing?
Food preparation and or food service. Look, look, my, my comment, my comment was this. I'm going to have my wedding now. I really don't want people to have to eat off of a plate that is compostable or recyclable.
I did at my daughter's wedding. It was very nice.
Very nice.
So tomorrow we'll go with it. We had a caterer at Bosco Bell who brought glass dishes and glasses and everything else, took them all out dirty, brought them back to his place and they would add to it. So if your, if your question is, I'm having a wedding, yes, I want glass plates. I want something nice.
Right.
And caterers can do that. So we don't want to eliminate the option for having that.
But, but having M in here, I, I, I don't know what value it adds.
I mean, I guess it's basically saying if, if you're going to be using disposable stuff, it has to be at least recyclable. So no, no styrofoam.
It, it just seems to me such a fine point that...
In our contract...
There are a lot of fine points in here.
In our contract with Parks, does it say anything about this or any of the things?
That's why, that's why he put it in there. There was something about this, you know, and it's under the general rule. So in general rules of the park, I don't think they were considering special events. And they probably wanted you to just bring disposable, you know, recyclables in there and not glass, probably because that's inviting broken glass. So, yes, so, so that's what we just changed.
Okay, so that was, so if that's the only question we can...
I think M should be stricken.
Struck. Struck. Other than that, um...
Well, does everyone agree it should be stricken? I don't. I think it's, it cares if it's in there.
I think if it's...
I don't, and I think it should be changed to compostable materials instead of recyclable.
I think of it, I think we should...
Because there are no recyclable forks.
And there are no recyclable bins.
And if we're not requiring them to have recycling bins to collect this stuff, then what happens?
This is, this is as, as Dave and Fran pointed out, these are general rules and regulations. This has nothing to do with special events. Special events comes later. So this is somebody who walks into the park and sits down with a picnic basket and we're going to tell them, well, nobody's going to tell them anything. They're going to sit there with this picnic basket and have their little picnic.
Okay, I get you there.
And I think at this point, you know, whatever it says in, in our agreement with Parks is what we should sort of carry over and...
All right, let's, I'll just look at, look at Parks and leave it for now. We'll take it out. I really don't care.
Other than that, if everyone, I think everyone should just take a final reading.
One more time to read it through, Fran.
Yeah, make sure I haven't edited something incorrectly or whatever.
And that's the last one. We're not going to keep going editing this every other week and finding more and more of this.
Oh, please, I've enjoyed, enjoying this.
This is it. I'm talking to people to watch this.
Can I make one more suggestion on the permit?
No.
All right.
I was only teasing.
Can I repeat a suggestion I made before on the application?
What?
I'd like to repeat that we need a contact number to contact somebody during the event. If there's a thing that is happening during the event, we need the name and cell phone number of the person who's responsible.
I can fit that. I know you asked me that three times and I'm sorry. It just went right out of my head.
You can put it either on the top or...
I'll put it in here, move something down.
Or you can move it here, like right under there, contact code.
And I think your map is beautiful.
Yes, I agree. The map is beautiful.
All right, so I have a contact number.
And the other thing, we were taking out the Parks permit, right? We took that out.
I took that out all over, so.
Sorry, Fran, one other place. Application check, New York State Office of Propagation and Star Preservation Alcohol.
I know it's, I know it's on this one though.
So, so another overnight look at it.
Okay.
Okay, so this is going to be, what's that? This is going to be talking about for... Okay, do the other guy.
Okay, uh, quick discussion on the Putnam Morning Food Fest. I think as a matter of, I think we should align whatever we have in this brochure, whatever the fee schedule, I think we agree on. I think the same fee schedule for special events should...
Oh, we just have to remember that she has already given us a thousand dollars and...
But that was without, we didn't...
Oh, I asked Jeff to...
Has it been approved?
I, I asked Jeff to give me what she has...
That was Mayor's Park.
This is Mayor's Park.
Yeah.
Right.
I asked Jeff to give me what she has already filled out and he gave us this. She gave us a thousand dollars deposit. I don't remember. He said it was another application.
But was it approved by anyone? She just came in and filled out something and it was twenty for it.
I thought we told her that, that she had the date reserved.
Approved by the rec department.
Okay, well, if it's approved, I guess we got to go.
He signed it, sir.
And there was nothing as far as the, the amount?
I think it was, did we tell her a thousand and something and it's going to be two days?
What says it? I don't know. It says a thousand are going to be here. I don't think there isn't a...
We did have it at a discussion at a board meeting.
See, I don't think there's nothing in there.
Approved by village board.
Yeah, but there's nothing here that says what the num, what, what the amount is.
I'll have to go back and look at the end of the notes or listen to the video.
So this particular application really needs a number. One thousand deposit received.
So, well, I guess we'll, we'll talk to Jeff, see if we can find out if we're, was it, she's been waiting, so I don't know why she's been waiting unless, we must have told her that it depended on what, we didn't come up with the fee yet.
Yeah, I think we told her that that was...
And I think the fee should align with the Dockside fee.
So what should it be?
I think it's twelve hundred, right? Or then there's whatever we have in the, in the, like, whatever we have in our...
I think the numbers were...
Twelve hundred.
It's twelve hundred and then whatever else she's including. I don't know. There's other stuff, police protection.
That's per day. She wanted two days.
And I think we told her a thousand a day, so we're not too far off.
I don't know. I think we was, she was waiting on the number, but we'll, I'll find out tomorrow.
Okay.
And does everyone agree that should be, it should be that if we haven't given her a number, that it should be the same as what special events at Dockside?
Yeah.
Yes, if we haven't given her.
Yeah, the same criteria for insurance and the same criteria for everything else that we have.
If we have. Yes.
Are you communicating with that bride?
Yes. Although she's also been communicating with Parks, so I don't know. I told her we're, we're almost there, so I'll, I'll talk to her tomorrow. I sat down and talked to her.
Have a fast, if I can enter for a second. Michelle just sent me a text. She wants to know, do we want to start either six or six thirty on March twenty-sixth for a meeting if we're going to do budget stuff?
What, what is that again?
Michelle just sent me a text.
Yeah.
Wants to know if we want to start early on March twenty-sixth, either six or six thirty.
Okay, it's up to you guys.
I go six thirty.
I, I, I don't see starting at six o'clock. There's one, one, on March twenty-sixth, she's going to redo the numbers. We're not going to have the, the Ames number, yes or no yet.
Right.
Plus me is seven.
You're going to have the estimates from the fire, fire, so we're just...
We'll try and get them before.
Seven, because it, it's not going to be a long meeting like this. It's not a long meeting.
Seven o'clock maybe.
Seven.
So I'll tell her seven.
Um, moving along, approved new vendor for water delivery. Jeff was doing a little research. It saves four dollars a bottle and plus five dollars a month for the, for the cooler. And I think it's water from Vermont. Very nice. But I'll make a, a motion to approve a new vendor for water delivery.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next approval of bills.
Okay, we have two batches to approve today. I moved to approve batch number five zero one six for a total amount of seventeen thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then I moved to approve batch five zero two three for a total amount of fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I have, okay, never mind. I just have to know here, see, but I guess it's a total of two for seventy-seven thousand, is that right? Okay. Approval of minutes, February nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, one comment, and I answered it. I didn't read everything, but just one comment. Sorry, getting there. Page two, line two. Ask the little officer board whether wish to raise wages for the village employees and whether to raise taxes, not up to forty-four thousand, but raises, raise taxes by forty-four thousand. Is that more correct? We're not going to raise them up to forty-four thousand. I'm, I'm not sure if I'm reading that right.
The, my intention, right, my recollection of what she said was it could be raised up to that amount.
An increase of forty, so, okay, all right, so.
Good.
Okay. Take it back.
All in favor?
Aye.
And approval of minutes, February twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
I made the motion. I made the motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything from anybody on the board? Anybody in the audience?
I have one, I'm sorry. I did, this was so quick. Um, I said this comment, this is a public, me, not a member of the board. I really like the Dockside Park arrangement. I really extremely urge you guys to build into the policy, some kind of limitation on how often the park can be closed to the public for a private event. It's never gonna be closed. So if no one can have a, something at the front of it and not allow people in during their wedding or something like that.
No.
Okay, then that takes care of my comment, so.
Public park and, and that's part of it.
So it'll be like the film society screenings. It's open, people can come in, like, I mean, not like interrupt the wedding, but you can use other part of the park if you're not bothering.
So for the, what we were doing.
So that's in there? I thought I read the whole thing. I guess I must have skipped.
We're in a roll call section for if there's a wedding, which would be one of the sections, so the whole front part will be open probably. I'd imagine they're gonna have it near the trees in that area, but the rest of the park will be open.
But what if there's like a ticketed fest, festival event or something like that?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be, they're gonna even have a section or it's gonna be open to everyone. They're gonna have to deal with it. The park has to stay open by park law, state park law.
Under special events, things to know, is there any special events portions of the park must remain open to the general public?
Okay, that's what I missed. Sorry, thank you. I'm just, I'm just trying to bump it to whoever's gonna win here at nine oh five, so.
Somebody's got, who's the closest, uh.
Uh, okay, Fran, Fran, no, sorry, Lynn, Lynn has nine seventeen.
Oh, Lynn.
So Lynn.
Sorry, time has closed. I've just made my point. Um, I encourage you to be aggressive with your, um, changes to the garbage and recycling rules. I think you should eliminate wet garbage from the stream or charge highly for it. There's no reason to pay to haul water, just like with the sludge from the water, the sewer department. Um, so composting, um, separated out, whatever it takes to, to bring that down. Recycling seems to be going away, so, um, we've gotta, people have to pay for what they're wasting, so I encourage you to be aggressive with that.
I agree, thank you.
August tenth and eleventh.
Anything else, anywhere? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I guess nine o'clock, by the way, but I didn't enter.
I, I did nine too, but.
Over and over.